I would like to call this meeting of the Rockingham County Public Schools Board for January 11th, 2021 to order. Our first order of business is to approve tonight's operating agenda. May I have a motion to that effect?
I move we approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Lohr. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please cast your vote.
We're working on getting video up to the monitors. Folks at home are seeing live stream, but we'll have those going here shortly.
Help the vote go, Pam. I can't. Thank you. We have an agenda for this evening's meeting. Would you please join me for a pledge of allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join together for a moment of silence. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is reorganization. It's time to elect a new chair and vice chair. With that in mind, may I have a motion for nomination for chair? Mr. Chairman, I nominate Renee Reed as chair. Thank you, sir. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Lohr. It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Please cast your vote. Thank you, ma'am. We have a new chair.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. Hopefully, somebody better not tell my husband yet. Dr. Seichel, I think you have a presentation.
Congratulations, Ms. Reed, to becoming the new chair of the school board. And as is tradition, I have a present for the outgoing chair, Mr. Falk. I want to thank you, not only from the school division about, for all the work that you did during a year that's really been unique. And we often say that, but 2020 certainly qualifies at the very top of the uniqueness list of unique school years. We began the school year in public meetings about redistricting, changing the school day, changing our collaboration time for teachers, changing how we stagger start times, and then went straight from there, I believe, five days after a vote to approve a pilot at Turner Ashby High School to try out those different instructional approaches into being shut down by the governor. And the rest is, of course, going to be covered in the history books. So, and so I want to thank you very deeply from the school division's perspective, but also personally for all the work that you have done as chair to guide us through that and of all the conversations in the mornings, in the evenings, on the phone and in person to work together to, you know, make education possible and get us back to this level of excellence that we're used to after being shut down for an extended period of time. So you'll receive this plaque in appreciation for outstanding leadership and service to the students and staff of Rockingham County Public Schools, to Mr. Lowell Falk, Chair 2020 of the Rockingham County School Board. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Mr. Falk, thank you. I will get used to this technology. Mr. Falk, thank you on behalf of the school board members for your service as chair this past year. As Dr. Seichel said, it's been quite a year with lots of things. And you've helped to navigate us and provide support to the superintendent and the senior leaders of the school division. And we're very appreciative of it. So, thank you. Board members, we need to elect a vice chair. I would entertain a motion for that.
I move that we nominate Jackie Lohr as vice chair.
Do you have a second?
My second.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. Any questions or discussion? Please vote. The vote was unanimous. Congratulations, Ms. Lohr. Deputy, or clerk and deputy clerk, Dr. Seichel.
I recommend the appointment of Ms. Pam Bocock as clerk and Dr. Doug Aldifer as deputy clerk of the Rockingham County School Board for the 2021 calendar year.
Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation regarding the clerk and deputy clerk for 2021. Do you have a motion for approval?
It's moved.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Lohr. Any questions or discussion? Please vote electronically. Yes, I can hear you. Thank you, Ms. Bocock. The vote was unanimous. So Ms. Bocock will continue to be our clerk, our fantastic clerk, and Dr. Aldifer is her deputy. Dr. Aldifer, superintendent's designee.
I recommend the approval of Dr. Doug Aldifer as the superintendent's designee to attend meetings of the school board in the absence or inability of the superintendent to attend.
Thank you, Dr. Seichel. Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation regarding the superintendent's designee. Do you have a motion?
I move to appoint Doug Aldifer as the superintendent's designee in the absence of the, or the inability of the superintendent to attend.
Thank you, Ms. Lohr. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Thank you, Ms. Bocock. The vote was unanimous. Dr. Seichel, the meeting schedule.
As is practiced during the reorganization, the board will establish a regular meeting schedule. Of course, the school board has recently approved that meeting schedule already. And so today is our first meeting, you know, of that schedule based on that split between business meetings and then meetings at the schools. And so I do recommend that the board approve the meeting schedule during the 2021 calendar year as previously approved on December 14th, 2020.
Board members, you've seen this, or heard the superintendent's recommendation regarding establishing the regular meeting schedule for 2021. Do you have a motion for approval?
I move to accept the superintendent's recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Breeden. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. Any questions or discussion, board members?
Looks like a good schedule, given that three of the first seven are on the East End.
Seeing no other discussion, board members, please vote. The vote was unanimous. And finally, Dr. Seichel, committee appointments.
The committee appointments that I recommend are the same as those during the 2020 calendar year. And those are Ms. Renee Reed as the Shenandoah Valley Special Education Regional Program and Extension Leadership Council, Dr. Charlotte McQuilkin to the Massanutten Governor's School Board, Massanutten Governor's School Board, Ms. Jackie Lohr to the Massanutten Technical Center Foundation Board, Ms. Jackie Lohr and Ms. Renee Reed as the Liaison Committee to the Board of Supervisors, and Dr. Charlotte McQuilkin as the REFIE Ex-Officio member.
Board members, you've seen the superintendent's recommendation regarding the committeeist appointments. Do you have a motion for approval?
I move we follow the superintendent's recommendation for the committee appointments.
Thank you, Ms. Lohr. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, please vote. The vote is unanimous. Thank you, Ms. Bocock. That completes our annual organization for the Rockingham County School Board for this year. We need to move now into public hearing for 2021, 2022 school operating budget. At this time, we've had no one sign up to speak or make public comments regarding the budget. Is there anyone here that wishes to address the board regarding the public operating budget at this time? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing for the school operating budget for 2021, 2022, and move on to public comments, which are comments from the public. Dr. Seichel, is it correct that we don't have online comments for this meeting?
That's correct. As was decided at the, or as we indicated at the last board meeting, the online comments were provided while, early on, while board meetings were not public. And with board meetings now shifting to public meetings, especially those also at schools where we have significantly more space and can provide physical distancing even with a large number of attendees, we had announced at the last board meeting that we would no longer have online comments and that a public comment would be made in person. Of course, anyone in the general public who wants to provide input to the school board or to my office, I can do so via email. All the email addresses are available. And I know that you've received emails from members of the community outside the regular board meeting schedule, you know, throughout your tenure, and that, of course, continues to be an option.
Thank you, Dr. Seichel. In reviewing the sheet, we do not have anyone signed up as a public comment speaker for tonight's meeting. Is there anyone that wishes to address the board? Seeing none, I'm sorry. Yes, please come up and state your name. You probably have a button, Miss Hughes, that you need to push to activate your speaker right there in the middle. Yep, there you go. Thank you.
My name is Joan Hughes. I basically just have a question. Back in the fall, I wrote every single one of you, and I heard no responses from any of you. Do you not answer your emails when public people send you an email? Let me turn this off.
No, that's okay, Miss Hughes. We do answer them. What was the specific subject that was related to?
About the return to school.
Return to school. Dr. Seichel has been the conduit to respond to those emails.
He got one, too.
Okay.
I did call the school board office, and I did get one of the assistant superintendents to call me back. But I just felt like y'all are here to represent us and that we should be hearing from y'all as well if you get a email.
Can you please spell your name for me?
It's Joan, J-O-A-N, Hughes, H-U-G-H-E-S. And basically, my concerns are still the same as they were in the fall. And now that I have a granddaughter that lives with me, so I've been the primary teacher when she's at home. And I have two granddaughters now that I'm watching on Fridays. And it just seems like there's a big discrepancy between what each one of them from different schools are getting, which concerns me. Also, the physical and mental health of my grandchildren, I see a big, big difference, especially in my youngest one. And, you know, so like I said, my concerns are still the same as they were in the fall. And I hope that more consideration is given for parents that want to have their kids in school more than two days a week will be thought seriously about because it's really being a detrimental. And I don't think having a year-long school session to make up for two semesters is, you know, isn't going to cut it. And so the sooner we can get back to school, the better. Thank you.
Miss Hughes, thank you for speaking in front of the board this evening. We appreciate that. And Dr. Seichel, I think his office will probably reach out to you also, again, for further conversation and some more insight. Okay.
And I want to comment just about the process. Sometimes when we have a board meeting where we make a decision, for example, to remain virtual, there are hundreds of emails that may come in, you know, within a week. And so at times, you know, we've said that frequently asked questions would be answered on the FAQ page. So that could be one opportunity. And then it's not always the case that every call would be returned either by a board member or by the superintendent. So that's fairly common that, that an assistant superintendent, for example, of innovation and learning, you know, we all work together on these plans, might make a return call. So, again, when the volume of emails exceeds that, what we can really reasonably reply to in person, then oftentimes, you know, that's the exact reason why we have a frequently asked questions page. And so many of the concerns are simply addressed there. And I think when we are asked to simply provide in-person learning, that's oftentimes, again, already been addressed either in the presentation or in the meeting or online. And so, yeah, there's simply not, you know, I've spoken with a parent one time for 45 minutes. And if you, if you really considered speaking to every parent for 45 minutes, I did that math one time. If I spoke to every parent for 45 minutes in Rockingham County schools, it would take me more than three years just to have those conversations. And so we have to have some efficiencies built in. And sometimes, again, they are, you know, responses provided online or that we also share the tasks and response. It's not that those are ignored. I've said this to many parents who made comments on Facebook, that all the comments that we received are read, we consider them. But when hundreds of them come in, right, with 12,000 students, then it's not always possible to write an individual response to everyone. So, but your comments are certainly not ignored.
Thank you, Dr. Seichel. Is there anyone else who wants to make any comments before the board this evening? Seeing no further comments, we will move on to action items. The first action item is the minutes for the previous meeting.
Madam Chair, do we want to do board highlights?
I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me. Yes, I'm sorry. I skipped board member highlights. So we'll start with board member highlights and then move into action items. Dr. McQuilkin.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Are you, are you all able to hear me? That's what I was afraid of. Now are you able to hear me? I'll move a little closer. I'd like to start with an unusual one, but a very positive one. I received an email from Janet Wendelken, who is on the, works with the Rockingham Memorial Hospital, the RMH Foundation, and she sent this email and she said, "Rockingham County Public Schools has delivered more than 220, more than 220 thank you and holiday cards that were written by students, teachers, and administrators. And this was all done before Christmas." And they came to the front door of the hospital, and she wanted to be able to thank people. So here's what they did with the cards. The cards were shared with their inpatient units. They were given out to patients. Some were taped to doors. And she said it was such a thoughtful thing for our students, teachers, and administrators to do. And she said she doesn't have the names to thank them. So if you want to, you could contact Janet, and she'll be glad to thank you. But on behalf of Janet and the RMH Foundation, I would like to say thank you to everyone who participated in this project. It was a wonderful giving project. And the second thing, while I'm thanking, I would like to thank all of our staff, from the superintendent to everyone in our school division, for all that you are doing, following all the mitigation strategies that we have in place, for participating, for making sure that our students are receiving the best education that we possibly can under these circumstances. And I just want to thank everybody involved for carrying on during this pandemic.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Mr. Falk?
Thank you, Chair Reed. I have two that I would like to mention. One is that we have closed the door on 2020. That's a real highlight. And two is that we have a new chair. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. Ms. Lohr?
Thank you. Also, we have sports back in our schools. And I would like to congratulate the Broadway Boys and Girls Varsity Teams for their wins in the past week. And then also everyone who participated in the first indoor polar bear track meet of 2021. I won't go through all of it, but congratulations to everybody. And yay, we have sports back. And, and just congratulations to all of those student athletes who are working so hard to compete in sports at this time. And also, thank you to everyone online and in person who are dealing with our technical issues. We'll get this all figured out. Just bear with us. But thank you all. Thank you for being here, and thank you for your support.
Thank you, Ms. Lohr. Mr. Breeden?
Thank you. I hear your concern, Miss Hughes, and accept my apologies that I did not get back to you. Dr. Scheichel outlined some of the reasons why that may have happened. Initially, when we started in this process, I was trying to at least write back to folks and say thank you for your input. So many of the emails had similar ideas, that it became difficult to answer, several of them. So they would go to a, to a general place. But what I would say to you and to anyone else, if you don't, if you don't hear back, and you just want to make sure that we got your message, my phone number is listed as well. So feel free to give me a call and say, hey, did you get my email? And what do you think? But please understand that in that, in that setting, I'm one of five. So I can't, I can't give you a decision on things. I may be able to just say thank you for your input, and we'll take it under consideration. Or here's what we've done along those lines. But to anyone else who, who feels that we've, that I've not followed through, my apologies. I have, I do try to read every one, and I, and I appreciate the input that we get. Thank you, Mr. Falk, for a good job this past year. I can't think of another year in the many, many years you and I have been doing this, when the challenges have been greater. So thank you for your leadership.
Thank you, Mr. Breeden. Dr. Scheichel?
My highlight actually took place today, and I want to thank Eric Fitzgerald for organizing this. So given that, you know, many of our students are in a virtual setting, it's been more difficult, of course, to connect students with employers. And so last year, we had a fantastic event at JMU, Harrisonburg-Rockingham Works, where different employers had students connect with them through an application called QEDIN. And with these face-to-face meetings not being possible, that event actually took place today virtually. And I popped in on a session from one of the companies. And the students were online, asking questions, and getting good feedback directly from staff members of those corporations. So that was one of the highlights to just show how staff members have, you know, found the opportunities amongst all the obstacles to make, to give students access to employers, even when that's not possible face-to-face, but still receive real-time feedback. So that was my highlight today. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Scheichel. Thank you to the board members for giving me the responsibility of shepherding us into 2021. Hopefully, I can do as well of a job as Mr. Falk has done through 2020, and look forward to this year with working with everybody. Ms. Hughes, continue to send us email messages and engage with us. We do read your emails. Sometimes it gets a little overwhelming. Sometimes they're not always so nice. And so, but continue to send us your emails. And know that, I, I speaking for myself, and I'm sure all the other board members, we are reading everything that we get. You know, it's kind of been a tsunami of electronics right now between Zoom meetings and, and email volume and the way that we communicate. And as Mr. Breeden said, please feel free also to reach out by phone to any of us. So thank you for coming tonight and reminding us, too.
Mr. Chair Reed, may I also add that just as we talk about receiving telephone calls, some of us work through the day, and it, it may be impossible to have an extended conversation at that particular time, but still call and will, I'm sure, I know I will try to get back to you if I'm in a place where I can't talk at that particular moment. I've had people who have called me, and I've said, can I call you back? I'm, I'm, actually, it was in the doctor's office once when somebody called, and that person said, you don't care, do you? And I said, yes, I do. I just need to let the doctor finish doing his thing. So we'll, we'll get back, but may not be able to talk at that time.
Thank you, Mr. Breeden. We'll move to action items. And the first item on that list is minutes. So we, board members, you have the minutes for December 14th, 2020. Do you have a motion to approve those minutes?
I move that we approve the minutes as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Lur. Any questions or discussion, board members? Seeing none, please vote. But, okay, okay. That's okay. I'll watch for Mr. Breeden's thumbs up. That, the minutes were passed unanimously. We have the bills for December 2020. Ms. Mast has provided us with the bills that need to be paid for December 2020. Do we have a motion for approval?
I move that we approve the December 2020 bills as presented.
Thank you, Dr. McWilkin. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Breeden. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
The vote unanimous.
Thank you, Ms. Bochak. Ms. Mast, you can pay the bills. Okay, adoption of civil rights assurances. Dr. Scheichel?
This is an annual approval of the, of policy ACA, the Civil Rights Assurances Certificate. And this is the assurance of compliance with Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964, Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act of 1973, Title IX of the Education Amendments of 1972, and the Age Discrimination Act of 1975. And I recommend approval of the Civil Rights Certificate.
Thank you, Dr. Scheichel. Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation regarding the adoption of the civil rights assurances. Do you have a motion for approval?
It's found in our policy manual.
It is. And it is also available in public content in this board meeting.
Updated salary scales. Ms. Mast?
Chair Reed, members of the board, and Dr. Scheichel, for your approval this evening, our amended salary scales for the current fiscal year. As you will recall, that the raise and changes to certain scales were removed from the budget in late March 2020 because of the undetermined effects of COVID-19, because of the undetermined effects COVID-19 would have on our possible budget. Now that revenues are on target for both the school and the county, the county amended our budget, giving us additional revenue, so we could proceed with the raise for the second part of the year. The new scales in the booklet that you received in line to be more competitive. Both the bus driver and clerical scales were in the current year budget, under review before they were
Dr. Scheichel?
I first want to thank the Board of Supervisors for being so gracious in the middle of the year to make funds available to us as they became available, to allow us to provide that mid-year raise. And then also to everyone in the HR department and in the finance department for the countless hours that have gone into researching salary scales and determining what an appropriate level of pay would be by this board to make those salaries competitive. And that took a lot of work. And of course, that part of we had to set aside during the pandemic, just in case, for example, sales tax revenue would not materialize, or that those changes possible. And I recommend approval of those salary scales.
Thank you, Dr. Scheichel. Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation regarding the updated salary scales. Do we have a motion for approval?
I move we follow the superintendent's recommendation to approve the 2021 updated salary scales as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Lur. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. McWilkin. Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
The vote unanimous.
Vote was unanimous. Thank you, Ms. Mast.
Just the bid results before you, just a little technology update. So in the last, in the last two weeks, came in and did mock meetings three different times. And of course, everything worked perfectly. And everything is working perfectly, except for the two monitors in here. Just to let you know, the folks on the live stream will be able to see the slides of the presentation. There are about 100 folks connected right now. So they'll be able to see them. In this room, we won't be able to see them. So Dr. Scheichel and I, we will, we will present from here without the slides up on the screen. The folks at home will be able to see it. They indicated one way to possibly fix it in this room was to restart the system, but that would have ended the stream for the 100 people at home. So we decided just to leave well enough alone. We'll get by here in this room, but we'll certainly troubleshoot this and have it ready for, for next time, for sure. Over the cameras. But there's a combination between picking up audio from a mic and also face recognition. So it's interesting, your mask off, the camera immediately went to you. But some of the other people, when you speak, if your mask is on, the camera's not panning around. So when you all get to your school board question, if you take your mask off, my guess is the camera will probably find you. So I'm learning, too. It worked a little bit differently from that when we were, we were testing it out. But I knew you all would probably want to know that as we get to the last part of the meeting. And feel free, if you have a question, while, you know, about any of the logistics in here as we go through the first few meetings here, just please ask. So the, the item, action item of business before you, an invitation for bid was released on November 11. Bids were due, sealed bids on December 18. And before
By Mr. Perkins.
Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation.
I move that we approve the superintendent's recommendation of Mr. Perkins' presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Breeden. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. Any questions or discussion? So Kevin, this is an upgrade to the equipment. Is that what this is? Or is this additional more equipment?
No, this is an upgrade. So all of the access points that are in our high schools, some of the switches and wiring closets, that equipment is over five years old now. So it's, it's due for a refresh. So this is replacing existing equipment.
Great. Thank you. Board members, the motion has been made and seconded. Any other questions or discussion?
The motion's unanimous.
Thank you, Ms. Bochak. The motion was unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Perkins. We're going to move to information items. And I think, Mr. Perkins, you're up again. Data security.
That's right. So I am here to update you on ongoing efforts to address data security and privacy in, in our school division. Cybersecurity and student data privacy is a growing concern. There have been over 1,000 cybersecurity-related incidents reported in U.S. K-12 public schools and districts in the last four years. So this is a growing concern. You might wonder exactly what is a cyber incident. It could be one of several things. It could be an unauthorized disclosure, breach, or hack that would disclose some sort of personal or sensitive data. It could be a ransomware attack, a phishing attack, denial of service attack, or some other incident that would result in school being disrupted and information getting out in an unauthorized, unauthorized fashion. And now that so much school business depends on online connectivity, especially, you know, during the pandemic, K-12 institutions are becoming a more valuable target for the bad actors out there. So that's unfortunate, but it's a reality that we're dealing with. In response to that, the Consortium of School Networking has developed Trusted Learning Environment SEAL Framework, and school divisions that earn this SEAL, the SEAL signifies that the division has implemented strong, measurable, and publicly available practices to help ensure the privacy of student data. And in the United States currently, 17 school divisions have earned this designation. In the state of Virginia, so far, only one school division, Loudoun County Public Schools, have earned the SEAL. And the SEAL program requires demonstration of adherence to 25 specific requirements categorized into five various practice areas. And those practice areas are leadership, business, data security, professional development, and classroom practices. And so it's a, it's a comprehensive framework, and it requires attention to all facets of, of school operation. So it forces divisions to take a look at how they operate in, in all parts of the organization. The Rockingham County Data Privacy Team was formed in July 2019, and has been meeting bi-monthly ever since. And the team is comprised of executive team leaders, as well as central office staff who are involved with network security and student data privacy. The work of the data privacy team is significant. And the next few things that I speak about highlight the work that's been coordinated by this data privacy team. The first thing, the most significant thing, is the development of a data privacy plan. The plan provides transparency regarding policies and procedures that ensure the security of division data systems. The Data Disaster Recovery Plan, which was developed, describes division data systems and the backup procedures of those systems in the event of a disaster or data breach. We've also developed some data security and privacy web resources. Those are already on our website and available to the public and to other stakeholders. And the sections are broken down to And the sections are broken down to pertinent groups of stakeholders. So there's a section for resources for staff, resources for students, and also resources for parents. We've also published a public listing of digital resources so that parents or members of the public can take a look at that listing. It's searchable, and it reflects websites, apps, web browser extensions that are in use for instruction. And when the public or a parent clicks on, on one of those particular resources, there's a description of the resource, there's a link for most of them to a privacy policy or terms of service. It indicates that the particular tool is compliant with the, the pertinent data privacy regulations. And also might have a comment like middle school iPad app or elementary school iPad app. So have an idea of what grade levels the resource is used for. Another thing that took quite a lot of work and is currently available to the public is a listing of shared student data. So the various vendors and tools that we have, we partner with and have available for instructional use, each one of those is broken down, and we've indicated which fields of student data is shared with that particular resource. So that provides a lot of transparency to parents and community members that might be concerned about what student data is shared and shared with whom. Another measure that we've implemented this, this academic year. So in August, right at the start of the school year, when staff, teachers returned, we did a phishing test that put an email out there. It was educational in nature, and it had a link in there. There were various flavors of the email, seeing who would click on something that, if it was a phishing email, they shouldn't click on. And so our first baseline, we had a 27.2% click rate, which was above the industry average of 17.1%. In this training, it's not punitive in any way, but it's just to raise awareness and hopefully make people more aware of things that they shouldn't click on in those types of emails. Good news is that in November, right after Black Friday, we put out a retail phishing exercise. That's a, a time of the year where everybody likes to click and get a good deal on something. Our click percent, percent went all the way down to 9.8%. So that was a significant difference. And while it wasn't apples to apples in terms of the content of the email, the needle is certainly moving in the right direction. And hopefully, we continue, we'll continue to do that every so often periodically on an ongoing basis to make people more aware of that, to better protect whether it's work data or personal data, either way. Our plan is this, yet this winter or spring, to formally apply for the Trusted Learning Environment SEAL. So we've got a draft application ready, and we'll be reviewing that over the coming months and hopefully, hope to formally submit that soon. And cybersecurity and student data privacy efforts are ongoing. It's not a one-and-done type thing and need continual review and adjustment. So even after this academic year, the data privacy team plans to meet at least quarterly moving forward. And, you know, just wanted to sort of close by saying that this presentation reflects the ongoing contributions of many people. And I just wanted to publicly and collectively thank those folks to close out remarks. And I'll certainly, in terms of future follow-up, will be sure to let you know when. It's not going to be an if, but it's could be when, and it might take multiple attempts. But we've earned that SEAL as a school division ourselves. So that's, that's certainly the intent and goal of all this work. So I'm certainly happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Board members, any questions for Mr. Perkins?
Not, not a question so much as a thank you very much. As a parent,
Certainly.
I'll share a funny story. My husband came to me today. He's like, I got the securely updates. And I, I don't normally look at them, but I looked at them today and discovered that my children are looking at tractor websites. So we, we have a very clear vision or picture of what our kids look at, and I thank you for that. But with my kids' tractor websites, we kind of guessed. But it is nice as a parent to be able to have all of these resources. And thank you very much for all your work.
You're welcome.
We thank you very much for, for all the work that, that goes into this and for striving to achieve the SEAL. This is a recognition of all the work that we're doing to ensure that our, our, our school system is as safe as it possibly could be. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins. Appreciate it. Superintendent COVID update, Dr. Seichel?
I will recommend to Mr. Perkins that next Black Friday, he sends out some really good deals on tractors and see who clicks. So you're just going to advance the slides based on what you hear, Kevin? Okay. I did place the presentation in the executive content in board docs for you just a few minutes ago. I shared it, so, but it depends on how you logged in, whether or not you'll be able to see the, the presentation, but you should be able to if you click on that link. A lot of what you see is really a repeat of some of the things that we've talked about previously. But as with every meeting, I wanted to provide an update where we are. As you know, after Thanksgiving, there's been a significant increase in the number of cases in Rockingham County, as it has been across the state and across the country. And a lot of that actually started even before Thanksgiving. So the numbers started going up into the 300s, 400s, in that CDC metric of cases per 100,000 over 14 days. And then it continued after Thanksgiving. And since before Christmas, if you look before Christmas and after Christmas, that change has not been particularly dramatic. So it's gone up over the last two days a little bit, but before then, we were at over 900, you know, in mid-December, and then were again over 900 just a few days ago. You'll see other areas in Virginia that are even higher, some that are lower certainly. And those numbers are typically a reflection of the implementation of distancing and mask wearing in the community. So it is community gatherings, healthcare settings, congregate settings, and also lots of healthcare areas where this, the spread is being driven based on information that I've received from the Virginia Department of Health, but not really as much, partly to any extent in a significant way by, for example, college students and K-12 education. So the first map that you see, again, is as of December 14th. So that's the latest information we have. You can see a patchwork of different opening plans or modus, the modus of operations in each school division. And you can see there's a wide range from all in-person to fully remote. And there does not seem to be a clear connection between how our school division operates and what the spread in that community is. On the second map, we are now, as a state, and have been now for a few days, all in red. So the entire state is above, in every, in every district, city, or county, above 200 cases per 100,000 over 14 days. And we're no exception to that, and we're significantly higher, as are many others. Stanton City, for example, is about, is a little bit higher still than where we are. But again, there are many that are all over the map, and they go down sometimes based on a single day's testing event. And then they, you know, we've been at about 60, 70 cases a day. Then we had a testing day yesterday. Other results that came back at 120, then some again lower. But on average, we're certainly much higher than we used to be. But again, that is true across the state. And Virginia, interestingly enough, is still one of the states with the lowest case incidents compared to, you know, the other states in the union. And now what we have provided to the public so far was a dashboard that indicated the active cases. So how many cases do we currently have in a school where someone came to the school building and then ended up tested, testing positive or being diagnosed and was in the building with that status? And so those numbers are generally low, but based on requests, both from staff and from some public comments, I did add a column today to the right side of that dashboard that shows the total number of cases since we brought students back on September 10th. So that column is now there. And so as the active cases, of course, come and go as someone recovers, then the total will increase at 151 so far in Rockingham County schools, both staff and students. So that doesn't distinguish the two, there's simply one column, because otherwise we'd get, you know, so many columns into this that it becomes just too much. And so that's a, a number that people can look at. The core indicators is, you know, the core indicators that you see on the CDC metrics, the top two are the ones that most school divisions have focused on when deciding how to operate. So the case number per 100,000 over 14 days, again, that's the number that we had talked about. You can see the current number. So we're at 1166 as of today. And then the percent positive rate, we're at 22%. Again, that's not a number that you want to see. Again, some of the percent positivity rate depends on how testing is done. If only those are tested who have symptoms, then just the pure fact that they're already getting tested with symptoms increases the percent positivity rate. This number is really useful when you have broad community testing, which we did have for a while. We had two events every week practically at the fairgrounds, at JMU, at, close to Centaur Park, but those are now no longer part of the equation due to a lot of shifts and at VDH to the vaccination efforts. And so there are currently, you know, those large-scale events, there's only one in their entire region this week, and it requires symptoms, and I think it's in Rockbridge. So it's, again, in that entire region, that doesn't happen as much anymore. But what I want to point to, and this is really what we have talked about a lot, is that third indicator, the third core indicator. And it, there's a circle, there's an oval around that, and that is the ability of school divisions to implement the mitigation strategies. And so for us, that means distancing, it means mandatory masks for everyone, it means the cleaning and disinfecting protocols, and one that's not mentioned here, but that has taken on increasing importance, and that is improved ventilation. And so a lot of the new federal stimulus money will go towards ventilation improvements. We already, you know, did a lot in that area by adding air purifiers, industrial-sized air purifiers. And we expect new guidance to come out from VDH and from DOE about the process that schools should go through to determine whether they should be open for in-person learning. And we have to wait for the governor to announce that. He changed his plans to talk about the vaccine last week, and so at his next press conference or the one after that. And we do expect new guidelines to come out for education. And just in a, in a briefing about what this process might look like, one point was raised, and that was that this third point here, this third indicator, is really important, and that school divisions shouldn't be afraid to use this third indicator as the one that modifies the decision that does not just include the case rate and the percent positivity, so that we need to look at how well we can implement the mitigation strategies. And we've talked about that, and I've talked about this at previous meetings. When you look at the secondary indicators, you know, again, you can see here that the case rate over the last seven days has been fairly stable, and that the percentage of hospital beds in the region that are occupied and that are occupied by COVID patients is still in the yellow range and not in orange or red. And so that's also important, but again, these are secondary indicators that are not as important as the case incidence rate and the percent positivity plus the ability to mitigate. And so what I've received a lot of comments about and emails about and questions about is this idea that schools are not driving the spread. Many say, well, you just can't tell for sure. And all I can point to is information internationally, information from this country, and also information that we've received from the Virginia Department of Health, and that the spread of the disease is really driven by other settings. And that certainly you can have a transmission in a school, and that that is most likely when mitigation strategies are not followed and aren't followed correctly and consistently. But that when you look at the impact on the community, that even if there's some transmission in a building, that it does not drive this increased spread in the community in general, because that's driven by private gatherings, by other congregate settings where the mitigation strategies are not in place, and both the CDC guidance has reflected that. And also, again, Virginia Department of Health information that we've received, and even again, back when the regional VDH director, Dr. Corningay, you know, talked about whether schools should go virtual, indicated in an email to all superintendents that in-person attendance is acceptable when mitigation is in place and, and is followed. So that is certainly something we have to keep in mind. We have to be good at implementing those mitigation strategies. And when we do, then having schools at six feet of physical distancing with mandatory masks and with good ventilation, in addition to the cleaning protocols and hygiene protocols, then it is not a significant driver of community spread. And CDC Director Redfield, I showed this slide at the last meeting already, but I wanted to reiterate that, because what we also have to keep in mind is, this isn't about saying, is a student safer in school or safer with, in an environment at home where support is available, technology is accessible, and everything else that a student needs is in place? And you can easily say that a student may be safer at home, but this is about alternatives. Our students, with the economy being open, our students aren't necessarily then at home in that environment, because many of those families have decided, you know, that they can provide that at home, but they're then in alternate childcare settings, in alternate settings where there's no mitigation in place. And so when you look at the alternatives, for our students, it is safer to be in school than to be in an alternate setting. And I think that's what Director Redfield there talked about, and that's also what we've seen, and those are the conversations that we've had with VDH. And we also have to consider the alternative of students not being in the buildings, right? Ms. Hughes talked about this earlier, you know, what's the impact on the kids in terms of mental health? We can't just ignore that and say that's not there, but we also have to do it in a way that doesn't turn into increased community spread. So I know all of you have received emails that say, you're killing kids by not having them in school. We've also received emails, we're killing people by sending them to school. And it is all about looking at what the cost is. We can create a safe environment when, that does not drive community spread when our staff and students follow the mitigation strategies consistently and correctly, and that is safer than the alternative. And then having those students in school on an A/B schedule is better for them than to be at home for an entire year, where recent estimates are in the millions of students in the United States that could simply fall through the cracks, because no one is now following up, and parents who want their kids to be invisible can now take advantage of a situation where follow-up is so much more difficult. We need to make sure that we have students in our schools where oftentimes the adult in the room might be the most important person in that student's life. And so these are the costs that we have to consider. And so I think, you know, here's an example that I provided in the presentation from Yale News, that, you know, the students that are harmed the most by school closures are those that can least afford it. If I had to keep my kids out of school when they were in middle school a decade ago, they would not have suffered particularly, because I would have had the resources to have them in an environment that's conducive to learning. I might have sent them to their grandmother overseas and said, you know, learn remotely, and in the meantime, you can experience another culture. That's not what we're talking about. We're talking about students that already have larger gaps in their learning, that also need this social environment, that need the emotional support that our behavior specialists, that our counselors, that our psychologists and social workers provide, and they can least afford to not be in school. And so we have to strike that balance, to bring students into schools because they need it, but to make it a safe environment, as safe as it can be. And that's what we're talking about, because either way, there is no option available that is zero cost. Because either way, there is no option available that is zero cost, right? There is a risk in every scenario, and we have to find that balance. And that's what makes it so difficult, that there are no great options for the sport to decide on, but that we need to make sure that we find a good balance. And I think, and I'm hopeful that the new guidance from DOE and VDH will take that into consideration as well. So we have had elementary students in schools since September and added more, you know, grades two through five in November. We added six, seven, and eight at the middle schools in November. And I've heard from teachers who were very reluctant early on, who now have said it was much better than they expected once they were in the building. And are there things that need to be better? Absolutely. Every time we find out about a mitigation strategy not being followed consistently and correctly, we need to intervene. That's an expectation. And we've communicated that to our schools over and over, and will continue to do so. And because it is a concern, right, if those are not followed. But high school students, they've had first semester mostly virtual because of, you know, issues in terms of awarding credits and schedules having to change midsemester. We did not want the high school student to lose a potential credit with transportation and so on. And so for second semester, beginning February 1, at this point, given that we do not yet know what the new VDH and DOE guidance is, at this point, we're moving forward with the plan to bring high school students back on an A B schedule. So it's the Monday and Thursday or Tuesday and Friday option at the beginning of second semester on February 1. Certainly, based on advice from VDH and DOE, there could be changes. And once the updated guidance is made public by Governor Northam in the next few weeks, we will evaluate both the guidance and our approach and act accordingly. For families who want to keep their students at home in the Home Learning Academy, that will continue to be an option. And in fact, we are also considering planning for such an option for next school year, because it's for some students, for example, who are on medical homebound or other cases where a student has a long-term absence, that could be a really valuable way to participate in the school day rather than simply with paper packets. And so we're evaluating the Home Learning Academy also to provide, for example, courses. We have some students who take one or two courses who are otherwise homeschooled, and we can provide that through the Home Learning Academy in many cases. So we are evaluating, you know, the Home Learning Academy in all kinds of ways also for the future. One of the most promising signs, of course, is the availability of the vaccine. Educators, for, you know, this exact reason that we need to make sure that our essential workers are protected are in Phase 1B of the vaccine protocol in Virginia of the vaccination plan. In 11 health districts, Phase 1B began today. The Central Shenandoah Health District that we're part of is not one of those 11, but it is now up to each health district to determine when they are ready. As part of this, I have to, you know, make sure that I thank Chief Holloway for his work, for the work he's done with us to ensure that our health staff in the buildings, including health instructors who take students into the hospital, were able to receive their first dose of the vaccine, and others who deal directly with student health issues received that first dose of the vaccine. And we will continue to work with him on accelerating that process to the best of their ability. We are sending out a survey this week to staff to determine who is going to get the vaccine and who's declining. There's always a percentage of staff that may decline, and we need to know that. And emergency management is working this week on a plan on when that will take place. We've had school nurses who have agreed to be, take part in the vaccination effort, so they will give the vaccine. And they also have already taken part as that first group in Phase 1A. And I added a picture at the very end of the presentation of our nurses, of four of our nurses, that were the first four to receive the vaccine a couple of weeks ago. And so they're soon due for the second dose. And again, I'm sending out an email this evening to the entire community about not only our plans, but also the vaccine with some additional information, FAQs from the CDC, but also medical advice from Penn State, where they explain how the vaccine actually works in your body. There's a really good page at VDH as well that I'll send out another time that explains a lot of the things, you know, why this vaccine is safe despite the rapid development, how the technology works with the messenger RNA, what the reaction can be in your body to that, how it then prevents a disease. But also to remind people that masks and distance will not just go away once someone gets the vaccine. At this point, we don't have enough information to say that the vaccine prevents the person who's vaccinated from infecting others. You could still potentially carry the virus, but what it does prevent is COVID, the COVID, the coronavirus disease. It does not necessarily prevent the person from passing on SARS-CoV-2, which is the virus that causes it. You could still carry the virus. If you have no symptoms, you're less likely, you know, to cough, to sneeze, so it reduces that spread. But it is not yet clear whether you can infect someone else. And so until we have that, you know, that's being investigated as people are receiving the vaccine, masks and distance will continue to be part of it. And also, there's no vaccine yet for anyone under 16. So one of the vaccines is for 18 and up, one is 16 and up. And, you know, the tests originally were for the highest risk categories so that this protection can be in place. And so the clinical trials now for children are underway. And so we hope, again, that maybe by the fall, that will exist as well. There are lots of rumors floating around that there's no mandatory vaccination. There's no vaccination, again, without parent consent. I read a story, you know, how DC is allowing 11-year-olds to be vaccinated without parent consent. That refers to the District of Columbia City Council, not to the federal government in Washington DC. So no such federal law exists. And so that would not happen without parent consent. And so again, because this is an emergency authorization at this point, it can't be mandatory either. And we would take our cue from state code anyway, whether a vaccine is listed to those that need to be given before school. So none of those decisions have been made at the state level, and certainly, we wouldn't do that on our own. So there's lots of information. Again, if you want to have good information, go to the CDC website and to the VDH website. I watched a presentation by Dr. Fauci last Friday when he spoke to Virginia faith leaders and talked about this concern that because of the rapid development, it wasn't safe. But the safety procedures, the investigation of how safe the vaccine is, that audit was done independently, and there were no shortcuts in that. The reason it was so rapid was, one, the two companies, Moderna and Bayern Tech in Germany, they had the messenger RNA technology ready. They were already experimenting with that for other diseases. And so they knew it could be successful. And then the phases that oftentimes run one after the other, some of those were allowed to run simultaneously. But that doesn't mean there are shortcuts in the protocol. So from everything I've heard and read from those in the field, it's certainly safe. I'm certainly planning to get vaccinated when it's available to protect myself, but I will continue to wear masks and distance myself to protect others. And I hope the community will do that as well. And that, you know, that will allow us, again, to have a safe environment for our students so they can return to in-person learning. I'll gladly answer any questions that you may have. And again, thank you for your support for the opening plans that we've followed so far.
Board members, questions for Dr. Scheikle, the comments?
Dr. Scheikle, when we talk about 1B schedule for educators, we're talking about all school personnel, correct?
Yes, that is not just teachers. I know in the media, there was the sense that it applies to teachers only, because that's how I think Governor Northam originally announced it. So teachers will not be part of it. That is, teachers and all education staff. So our Rockham County employees, whether it's bus drivers, clerical staff, coaches, teachers, their administrators, and they are all part of this group 1B. And in fact, because in each phase, so 1A had four sub-phases, each of the phases has these subgroupings. And so educators were actually moved very high. I think there are nine different groups in Phase 1B, and we're the third group. So there are law enforcement officers, first responders, you know, still in Phase 1B, and educators are very much at the top of the list. Yeah, but it applies to all staff. But it's K through 12, so it does not include higher education at this point. So K through 12 is the education staff that's in Phase 1B.
How will our staff get their vaccines? Are we doing them in-house? You'd mentioned something about the nurses.
Yeah, so some of this, you know, we, ideally, you just have a vaccination clinic in each building. But these clinics have to be supervised by VDH staff. And so the current plan is to, it will be spread out over a couple of weeks, and we will select either one or two clinics per week. And that's why it was important to ask our school nurses, you know, to be part of this. And the plans on how to exactly schedule everything, that's being created this week by emergency management. And I know Chief Holloway will let me know as soon as he has the timing. Our first conversations were about if we can do two per week, it would be two high schools one week, two high schools the next week. And then, again, once we return, for it's 28 days with the Moderna vaccine, which is the one that so far we've had in the county. It's 28 days later would be the second dose. And it wouldn't mean that only people in that attendance area could get it. You know, it would be available. We may have to prioritize in what order we want to go. But those would also not be during the day, because you can't expect, you know, teachers at the elementary school to just move over to the high school for the vaccine. So the clinics at the Port Republic Fire Station where our nurses were vaccinated, those were typically from 3 o'clock to 6 o'clock. And so they would drive up, and then, again, the number of people would be available to administer the vaccine. But we'll know the details, hopefully, by the end of this week.
And you had mentioned the ability to implement the five key mitigation strategies is vital to not having spread in schools. Can we keep those mitigation strategies in place and have kids in school four days a week?
No, because one of the key mitigation strategies is six-foot distancing. And so that could be a theoretical approach, but we are not going down that road at this point, particularly not when we balance the community spread with the need to have students in school. And when I've talked to State Superintendent Lane, you know, the desire is to have kids in school. It's not about everyone being in school four or five days a week. It is about having school in person, whether that's twice a week. He talked about, you know, some school divisions may do that once every other week. But, you know, our approach is to stay at six-foot distancing. There is some mention in the Virginia Department of Education reopening plan that when six-foot distancing is not feasible, so you couldn't even run it, you know, at all with that in a reasonable way, that three-foot distancing could be considered. But that's certainly a step down when it comes to safety. Three-foot distancing is still the rule by the World Health Organization and some other countries, three-foot distancing is used. The American Academy of Pediatrics has said that three-foot distancing could be considered, but six-foot is still the standard. And it's also the standard for investigating exposure. So if we were at three-foot distancing, and as we've had 151 times, we have someone in the building who tests positive, then in a classroom, if everyone was three feet, then everyone within that radius of six feet would now have to be quarantined, even though they followed the three-foot distancing and masks. And so we're not going to do that at this point. Once vaccination numbers are high enough where you can be comfortable, then in some environments, you could consider that. But we're nowhere close to considering three feet. And I will say, the six-foot distancing and the exposure definition, they've given us some insight too, because we have had in a number of cases, when we speak to the school, when we look at the person that tests positive, there's always an investigation, who would they have been accosted to? So within six feet for 15 minutes in a 24-hour time period. And we've had a number of cases where someone then received a separate notification that they were exposed. Yet, we've talked about this at the office a couple of days ago. But those have not resulted in that person that was exposed then testing positive when it was within six feet, but with masks on, right, and ventilation in place. So there is some protection within six feet, especially when masks are worn. But because the CDC definition doesn't take masks into consideration, it's purely based on time and distance. We're not comfortable at this point simply going to something that even DOE says is kind of a last resort to bring kids back, not with the numbers we have. And that would be, I think, a step that goes a little bit too far at this point. You know, it's important to have kids back, but not by simply using that lower threshold. So six foot, and that allows us to bring kids back on A B.
Any other questions, board members? All right, thank you, Dr. Scheikle, appreciate it. Dr. Aldifer, policy revisions?
Chair Reed, members of the board, Dr. Scheikle. Just as a follow-up to what Dr. Scheikle was just speaking of, we sent out the survey today. I was just looking at some of the results just now. We have almost 700 responses already. It was, the survey was sent out this afternoon, about four. And of those 700, well over 80% have indicated that they would, are interested in getting the vaccine. And then the other, about 15 to 18%, are either no or unsure at this time. So those numbers are encouraging. We again have our allotment of policies for your review. This is the special ed edition of these policies. So there are three for you to review this month. One on restraint and seclusion of students, disciplining students with disabilities, and discipline of students with disabilities for infliction of serious bodily injury. Each of these are the VSBA version of these particular policies. They were reviewed by Scott Hand specifically before bringing them to your attention. I will say that if you have questions about them, I would ask that Scott would come to answer those as he's more familiar with the policies than I am. But we are happy to answer questions either now or at a later time.
Board members, any questions at this time on the policies?
In looking at these, they look like they're completely new.
Yeah, we were talking about that actually before the meeting. So the one on restraint and seclusion is absolutely new. The other ones, the discipline of students with disabilities for infliction of serious bodily injury, that's one that is not one we've had in our policy manual before. The other one about disciplining students with disabilities, that actually is, there's a part of that in our policy JFC, but it's being pulled out into its own policy.
Thank you, Dr. Aldifer. Board members, in your packet, you also have the financial review for December 2020 and the attendance board report for November 2020. That will conclude our information items. We're on to other business and school board questions and answers. Dr. McColken.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. I would like to thank Dr. Scheikle for the update on the COVID. And I'm absolutely grateful that all of our staff, everyone in the division, has the opportunity to have a vaccine if they wish to have one. I think that's very critical, and I'm just grateful. And we'd like to thank you for your leadership. This has certainly been challenging, and that's just a mild word. And we appreciate all the work that you and your administrative team and everybody in the entire division has done. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Mr. Buriden?
Thank you, Ms. Reed. I certainly agree with Dr. McQuilkin's sentiments. Appreciate all of the hard work that's going on. Appreciate all of the hard work that's going on. But if you all will indulge me, a proud grandpa moment. I did not mention during highlights that our family welcomed a member of the class of 2039 in Rockham County Schools as Hudson Briggs Breeden came into our family on Thursday morning. So, pretty excited about that.
Thank you, and congratulations, Mr. Breeden, to you and your family.
Thank you.
Ms. Lohr?
My first question is, is that really the graduation date? Sounds like it's 100 years away, doesn't it?
Only I'll be 100 years old when it happens.
Wow, at least it won't be 2020, so thank goodness for that. Congratulations, Mr. Reed. I have a quick question, I hope it's a quick question for Dr. Aldifer. The vaccine is not recommended for pregnant people, is it?
I'm not that kind of doctor. I'm not, I don't want to speak to that. I'm not sure about that. I have read some things to that effect, but I don't know that on authority.
Which would, I'm trying to figure out the 20% declining it, and I would imagine that we have quite a few pregnant.
Right.
Employees.
I did get, I've gotten a number of emails since I sent it out earlier today from some of our employees who have actually gotten it at another location, either their volunteer for the rescue squad or maybe part-time work at the hospital. And they had indicated they were marking no because they don't need it with us. So, those numbers will be somewhat skewed, but the ballpark numbers of those were higher than what the national average would be, certainly, if it's been surveyed.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
I do want to make a quick comment about your question about women who are pregnant. The reason why there's no clear answer is that the clinical trials didn't include pregnant women for very good reasons, just as they didn't include children. There's every expectation, really, that the vaccine, maybe in a lower dose, is effective for children, just because of how it works. And the recommendation that I've read is that women who are pregnant should discuss it with their care provider.
Do you know if any other?
But there's not an absolute no, so.
So, possibly pregnant women, and it wasn't tested on anybody under 16. Do you know what other groups that could be potentially employed by us?
Well, anyone who is allergic to vaccines, for example. And so, that's one where there's clearly the indication that they should not get it. But it's also a different type of vaccine because of the messenger RNA approach, so it's different from, for example, from the flu vaccine. Oftentimes, you see warnings that people who are allergic to eggs should not get the vaccine. That's not the case here because it's not grown in eggs, it's purely lab-created. So, again, the VDH FAQ page, I believe, has an item on that. And again, anyone who has questions about whether they should get it should talk to their physician.
And that was part of the email that you sent out?
Yeah.
Thank you very much for that. While I've got you, Dr. Scheichel, can you tell us a little bit more about SOLs? I've got a kiddo taking one this week.
Yeah, I will defer to Dr. Shiflett, our Assistant Superintendent of Innovation and Learning. He just recently spoke with the DNR on that topic. There's quite a bit of flexibility, but we can't get rid of all the SOL testing simply because of federal requirements, but Dr. Shiflett can provide more detail on that.
Not that my kid is, just for the record.
Thank you very much. How, well, actually, I'm not done, I'm sorry. How is this going to impact our schools?
And if a parent opts out, because that's permissible, I can opt out of having my child take an SOL, but he'll still have to make five before he graduates, correct?
I think that's all my questions now. Thank you so much, and thanks for all of your work on this.
Thank you, Ms. Lohr. Mr. Falk?
I'll pass, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. Many thanks to all of you for being here this evening, and we appreciate it, having your time with us. New environment, Mr. Perkins, thanks for continuing to work out those bugs, appreciate it, and for all that you've done. I hope that all of you've had a quiet holiday season and a little bit of a break. I know the last meeting, I sort of begged our constituents and our community to kind of give you a little bit of that break, so I hope that you got that during the past two weeks, and look forward to us taking the next curve and the next bend and the next mountain and getting our high schools into, high schoolers into school and continuing to support the children of Rockham County. So, thank you, safe travels home tonight. Board members, we have reason to enter a closed meeting tonight, so I need a motion to do that?
I move that the board enter a closed meeting for the purpose to discuss or consider the following pursuant to the provisions of Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1 personnel, specific public officers, appointees, or employees for the purpose of considering such individual's assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, salary, or resignation.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Breeden. Any questions or discussion? Thank you, Ms. Bocock. The vote is unanimous, we are now in closed session. Thank you for joining us this evening.